David, you ready?
I am ready.
All right, we're gonna bring this meeting to order at this time. Everybody stand, we're gonna do the prayer and the pledge. Lord, we come to you today and we ask that you have your hand of healing on all the people that's struggling with this terrible COVID disease. Seems to be hitting harder right now than it than it did originally. A lot of people suffering from it. And, uh, but we ask you just put a healing on this, on our whole nation. Seems like we, uh, just can't get everything, everybody working together, uh, in a while now. And, uh, we ask that you give each one of us guidance in making decisions today that's best for the county, best for the employees of the county, and best for the citizens of the county. Lord, we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Legislate. United States of America, and to the Republic which is standing here, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a, or do we have any additions or deletions on the agenda?
We do not.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, floor budget. David, is it gonna be you or?
Action budgetary issues.
So basically, um, we're here today after last week's work session. Uh, kind of where we stand is we have a preliminary floor budget that has been worked on and is about ready, but needs some decisions to be made by the board so we can finalize it by tomorrow. So you can get it in your agenda package for next week where we will actually submit the floor budget. We'd like to have the floor budget as close to what you want. Uh, certainly you have the opportunity, once it's submitted, to make changes to it. Uh, prior to the first public hearing, we would request that most of the changes be made prior to the first public hearing. So that when we get into the public hearings, you pretty know what, pretty much know what the budget is and how you want to proceed with that budget. There'll be two public hearings in September. So, uh, we worked very hard on this floor budget for a long time. We held expenditures to COVID levels. If you remember when COVID hit, uh, we expected a lot of revenue loss. And so we cut back expenditures and really tightened our belts. We went into this floor budget with, we want to keep those belts tight. We don't want to spend a lot of extra money. And so the departments held their budgets to where they were during the COVID years. So you will not see a lot of growth in departmental budgets. We tried to keep everything constant in the floor budget, um, so that you could make decisions on where the major changes would be. There are some things that are in the floor budget that are a little bit higher, uh, because they're just things we knew we had to pay, like increases in insurance, increases in, uh, workers' comp, increases in retirement. Um, we'll talk a little bit later about the tax collector. He works on a basis where he gets paid based on what he collects. You really don't have a choice in that, um, it's based on what he collects. So that was built into the floor budget. So at the end of the day, we built all that stuff into the floor budget. The only increases in the floor budget were those things, like I said, that absolutely had to be increased. So it is a very lean budget and we're confident we can live with it. Uh, we're trying to be very, uh, cost conscious. Having said that, at the end of the day, based on the revenue projections, based on our expenditure projections where the floor budget is today, there's basically four million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars remaining uh, between expenditures and revenues. That you then, as you make decisions today, we will reduce that number. At the end of the day, there'll be a amount left over that, um, so you can see exactly where we stand on the floor budget as you make your decisions. Any questions? Again, Mr. Powell was here, if you have any questions for him. Um, he helped us with a lot of the revenue projections. He presented those to you last week. Uh, if you have questions on the revenue projections, we've got last week's backup material loaded, so we can pull that stuff up if you need it. If you have no questions, we will proceed going issue by issue down the list and what you decide, we'll put in the, uh, reoccurring funds. These are all reoccurring funds, by the way, we're not talking about the non-recurring. Let me state that. The non-recurring funds, the year-end monies, we are not talking about right now. We're just talking about those funds that reoccur every year. So as you make these decisions, David will enter them in the reoccurring funds column and it'll automatically reduce that number at the bottom. So at the end of the day, after you make your decisions, you'll see what that number on the bottom is and that will be the funds that you have remaining. Does anybody have any questions? So I guess the first item, the big item, is the salary adjustment plan.
David, before you get started, is there anything, Mr. Powell, you need to add to that or just, okay?
Uh, thank you, Dave.
Okay, so the first issue is the salary adjustment plan. Last week, you were given several options from no raises to doing everything all at once, as you directed us to give you a number on, um, to spreading it over three years, to just doing the people below fifteen to fifteen, to just giving everybody five dollar an hour raise across the board as a cost of living. At this point in time, we're just asking the board's direction on how you want to proceed with, um, with that.
Board, I, I, I would like to address this for a minute. And if y'all would just listen to what I have to say and, oh, I've been studying this all week with the raises. What I would like to see done is across the board, two dollar an hour raise. That's gonna come out to around two point seven me, I mean, uh, one point seven me. And, uh, but what I'd like to do is budget two million dollars for raises. That'll leave you three hundred thousand dollars to address problem areas. And I've looked at all the salaries with different ones and all, and there is some problem areas that we're gonna have to address a little more than the two dollars an hour. But that leaves, that's gonna leave you about three hundred thousand dollars to do that with, if we do the two million dollars. And also, we're absor-, I, I, I would ask the board to absorb the raise in the insurance this year. That's gonna be about four hundred and something dollars per employee. So with that being said, that's gonna give each employee over a four thousand, around forty-five hundred dollar raise this year. Oh, and the insurance adjust, absorbing the insurance, we could do that with some of this money or we could do it with, with the ARPA. And, uh, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Can you, I, I got something I want to say before we make a motion.
Okay.
I, uh, I, he, staff came up with a plan to make county employees whole in three years. And I know that we can only go one year at a time. We can't, it's about like, you can't look up a bull's butt and tell what the price of butter is. So we know that we can deal with it one year at a time, not obligate ourselves two years out, but set a foundation on where we can work. I support the, the, the process that staff went through, uh, with a three-year window on, on making employees whole, only realizing we can budget for one year at a time to do so. Uh, you know, it's been like this all the while for employees and I'm, I'm part of it. Uh, that, that we talk about benefits that employees get. Benefits, that's fine, but benefits do not put dollars in employees' pockets. When we got people at Burger King gonna be making more than a five a month mate, something wrong with that picture. Get yourself wrong with it. We got to develop a system not depend on, on, on what their employee get in benefits. There's a lot of companies that have benefits, but they still pay their employees well, PCS of their old accidental. They got great benefits they give their employees, but they make a lot of money also that they can bring home and put in their pocket. So I don't think you look at benefits and say, oh, well, you getting this and you getting that. I'm, I'm tired of looking at what other counties our size, like we always have done, since I've been on this board. We look at what other counties our size make and, uh, 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 pay. And we always say we are in that range. Well, I, I, that just, for me, that doesn't work anymore. And I, I can't say four dollars an hour, I thought we were gonna, I support not getting into the detail. We've been through the detail with the, with the, uh, uh, plan that staff brought forward and I think it makes employees whole if we get implemented in three years. But he'll be a good start with the ten percent across the board for every employee based on the analysis that the staff put together.
Mr. Chair, I think we all want to get to the same place. I think we just have different, uh, ideas of what's the best way to get there. Now, I've, my problem from the get-go with the original plan that was submitted was that I, I've looked at the salaries and you can see there's certain departments that have bigger problems than others. Fire department, recreation. And I, we, we gotta, we got one time to get this right. And I, I think just saying we're gonna throw this across the board and this across the board doesn't address those individual department problems. And if we can start addressing them now in, in this process, this is gonna be a multi-year process. We can't bind future boards. Hopefully, I'm sitting here, uh, I'll, I'll be here next year, hopefully I'll be here four years after that. I plan on it, working hard to do it. But, uh, you know, this is gonna be a multi-year process. I think a plan that does both, that says we're gonna raise everybody up, uh, from, from the bottom, a couple of dollars an hour. Um, if you did that over, over, uh, three years, that's a twelve thousand dollar raise for all employees and work it from that end. But also in that say, we're gonna give staff money on top of that every year to go into the fire department and go into recreation and, and address the issues individually. Uh, Kevin's got issues in his department where he's got, you know, uh, managers, uh, not separated from, 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 from his, from his, the guys he supervises. And this gives David and Kevin and, and department heads flexibility. If we take care of the employees as a whole, raising salaries every year and also put money on top of that to take care of the individual problems, we can fix this more surgically. Instead of just going in the bar, across the board, throwing money to everybody, the same, you're not fixing those individual problems. And if we can start addressing individual problems now, this year, do it again next year, do it again the year after that, and maybe add a fourth year on that. Then, once that's all fixed and we're through this, you know, we, we can, we can give raises across the board and our separation's still there and, and, and we don't get in this situation again. And that's my only criticism of it. I think we all want the same thing, it's just how do we get there? And I want to take a more in-depth approach than just let's throw money to everybody. And, 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 you know, a, a ten percent across the board or a two dollars across the board, you know, uh, uh, a way to deal with it doesn't fix our separation issue. So I think you gotta do both. I think you gotta get salaries up across the board, but I think you also gotta give the ci-, uh, the county manager the latitude to fix these problem areas. And, and that's why I, I like a concept like what the chairs talk about. I, I've argued the same concept when we had discussion before, so.
And, and let me add, by all means, I'll be sitting here next year too, for sure, next year. And I have all intentions of repeating this next year. You know, we can't see into the future, but if everything holds like it's going, this could be a three to four-year plan. You see, I mean, you know, but to start with, you got to get everybody up two dollars an hour. And you got to address problems. You got to have money to do both. And two million dollars would, would, would do that this fiscal year, starting October first. So.
Chair, with the, with the proposal that you're bringing forth, uh, I, I definitely understand, I, I understand Ron's concerns down there also. But the, the one thing that I, I do like about it is although the fiscal budget starts on October first, this is nothing, uh, this is nothing a- as far as, as far as dealing with the issues that we know we got in recreation, we know we got in the fire, we know we got nine-one-one. We can go to work on that right now and then come October one, with that money allocated in the floor budget, these people aren't gonna be looking at us dealing with this thing a year from now. They can see immediate results in September, i- i- the way I look at it. I mean, because it's, it's pretty obvious, and I'm not gonna throw names here, but when I got one man sitting here doing this, and I got another man sitting here doing this, and he's over all these people and there's fifty cents that separates them, we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis. And I think the leaders of our departments has got enough knowledge to do such as that. They, they've been dealing with this for years and thi- this is a problem all over the country. But, uh, I think it's a more direct, immediate, and, and I was talking to staff, uh, early on last week, or the end of last week. Uh, it's gonna sting in some situations, but it's just part of the growing pains that in Columbia County is looking at a lot of growing pains in the next twenty years. Uh, but I, I, uh, I think it's a realistic approach and, uh,
and the thing about it is, hey, we can go back and change anything we want to. Well, if you, if you go to that concept though, you're right, everybody gets something initially. But then these, the, the problem, the, the more surgical areas, you gotta go correct. You know, you, there's no, you don't have to correct those by October one. You can, you can work on those in October and have them done in November and then whoever you fix, retroing back to October one. There, we're not crunched for time to come up with this. You get everybody an, an initial raise, you give David money to go in and correct the problems. And I just, I just think it's a better way to do it because it, going across the board, we're not fixing things. I want to start fixing things.
The, 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 the way, the way it should work, this initial across the board should make everybody hold the same. The next year, you start working on the, 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 ma- ma- maybe somebody might get another ten percent next year and maybe somebody only get five percent, only get three percent. It's not like the plan, every year give the same amount of, uh, of, uh, uh, increases if based on, on how you do the separation and keep bringing it up. If you keep bringing the top up with the same amount of percentage as you do the bottom, you never catch up. So he's not set at where the top get the same percentage in year two as, as the bottom till get.
Yeah, but if, if you're, if you're doing a, a dollar-based raise, the percentage isn't the same. The percentage is different based on income.
And, and, and I concur with Ron to a degree, but I kind of look at it this way. If I've got a man or a woman out there performing task A, that's got all the qualifications to do such and they're at sixty-five thousand dollars a year. But then I got a gentleman down here or a woman down here that's performing the same exact task, got the same exact qualifications. Do I, uh, PCS, new millennium, all the big players in the world. Everybody makes that same amount of money. Now, in government, dedication of years service, because i- i- the saying's always been, well, we'll make less money. We're gonna benefit on, we're gonna reap benefits in the future. You got retirement for the rest of your life, a little bit different scenario. But, but my point is, I think that person is just as qualified. It, it, you got, you got one man up here or a woman up here over a hundred, uh, employees. Then you got another man down here, he's performing the same equal task, but he's over two employees, but he makes more than this one. Uh, we can work on it, we can make that, we can fix that almost instantaneous of what the chair is protect, uh, you know, because what Ron said, you know, you two, three, four percent, uh, this, 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 uh, when this thing's addressed, uh, staff may bring it back to us and we may all agree that, heck, that guy deserves a fifteen percent in- increase at this point in time. But then again, in order to keep everything kind of along, keep the spread, this gentleman or woman may get two percent. So, uh, I, uh, if, if.
I say something, Chair. Um, this, this is how I see this. We've got the money to do it. And I, I know there's concerns about, you know, piecemeal this to certain people and, and, but, but one thing I've learned being a county commissioner, I'm not staff. And staff typically knows more about the day-to-day operations of, of the county, the day-to-day work they do, their worth, how good their employees are, how many employees they're losing because they don't get paid. And, and I, I think we just lost one the other day that we thought we might be able to retain, but we didn't. But, um, I, we have the money to do it. And, and I generally try to go with staff's recommendations because I think staff is the one that has to look these men in the eye and call them out on a Saturday night or whenever they come out. And, and I know they've been working pretty hard lately. And, and I, I'm not a, I, I'm not going, i- it's hard for me to look those, look at those employees and look at staff and go, well, we know better. And, and, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. I, I have people in my office that know their job better than I do. And, and that's just because they do it every day. They know what's happening in court, they know what they're doing. And if I come in there and throw something in there that, that they don't recommend, sometimes it makes them, well, I don't want, you know, I, I just feel like I'm, I'm gonna have to stick with this program that we've, that staff has recommended because I just, I, I think that we have the money to do it right now and we might not next year. You know, and, and it's just one of those things that I, I, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to stick with employees and, and stick with this, this plan that we have because I don't, I think staff is, is, has done their best and, and has shown us a, a lot of situations where they're losing people and, and those men work. And I know y'all all respect those employees too. It's just that I, I, I'm, I'm gonna have to go with staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, and, and, and here's the, 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 the irony o- o- of, of, of the whole deal. We're not only just talking about our staff, there's other departments, uh, that, that fall in that same gap, I sense speaking. But when you have other department heads say, I don't have a person in my office make less than fifteen dollars an hour, make more than fifteen dollars an hour.
Well, that's constitutional.
I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just saying that's constitutional.
I did not interrupt you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I, 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 I think that, that, and, 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 and guys, you know, history speaks for itself. Every time we do a budget, this board of county commissioners always take the low side. We have always give everybody else as much as we could to make them happy and we suffer. You can go back, Dick, Dick, am I lying? Always have. For forty years, we have done that. Forty years, we have done that. Give everybody else what they want and we take the scrap. Now, by golly, when it comes to these employees, I'm tired of taking the scrap. Plant, staff got a plan to, to work, let's stay out of it, let them work it. We can address and see what they done next year. If we got the money to do it again, we'll do it again or we'll adjust to what we got. But we got good employees that need a, a kick in the hands with money. And COVID have changed how you deal, you deal with a worker now. Whoever thought that flipping burgers would have been fifteen dollars an hour? You can read in the paper all the time where they giving you three thousand, five thousand dollars just to sign on and come to work on, and, and on a certain criteria. COVID have changed how Americans, how we deal with Americans and, and their workers now. And we have to do the same thing. We got a, a foundation to bring our employees to the level where they, they need to be and be competitive with everybody else and, 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 and do away with, with, with saying, well, you make this, but you got all these benefits you need to consider also. Other companies give benefits, like I said in our first statement.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're saying the same thing. Again, I, I just think we disagree on how to get there. I mean, basically, in both plans, you're putting upwards of two million dollars this year into salaries. And in both plans, you're going across the board with something. Now, I have listened to staff since I got elected as a county commissioner. I've listened to you for four years and you told me about these little problems. Well, no, they're not little problems, these problem areas. I've listened to you. And I think what got us in the situation to start with is just this blanket across-the-board approach and it's time to stop that. This, right now on the front end, let's start fixing these problems. We're doing the same thing, we're just going about it different. And, uh, I, I, I support, I support the concept the chairman laid out in his motion. I support across the board, two dollars an hour. And then I support giving you funds also to use at your discretion to begin addressing these problem areas. Everybody gets something and we can fix ri- fire, we can fix recreation. We did the same thing next year. Hopefully by year three, everything that's wrong in, in, in your steps with your people is, is, is rectified. And, and, and then we can get back to, you know, across the board, dollar amount raises and we don't, we don't get in this situation anymore.
And, and I agree with, I agree with you, Commissioner Witt. I am listening to staff. Staff's telling me we've got problem areas with payroll that we need to address. And that's why I'm putting this money in there to address those problems. But I don't know every employee with the county, I don't know what every employee in the county deserves. Staff does know that. But I do know every employee deserves a raise and the two dollars an hour this year would do that. And we could still have money to address those problem areas.
And then by the time you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So like I said, I'm sticking with my motion and I'm asking for a second.
I got a second. Well, let me make a comment before we take a vote, if I could. With a forty-five hundred dollar increase and call it political, call it whatever you want to, but in reality, uh, Commissioner Hollinsworth, he, he employs people, Rocky does, Ron does, I do, all of us do. But my point is, and, and, and we're just little peas in the pot. But you gotta look at Columbia County as a whole too, because the taxpayers support what goes on here in this operation, but they're hard-earned dollars. And I challenge anybody here or in the community, how many local businesses with COVID, without COVID, are gonna be looking at forty-five hundred dollar a year increases to their employees? I'll speak up, I ain't no way in God's green earth I can do it. That's fact. And, uh, because COVID's affected us in a different manner. You know, when I'm paying, uh, sixty percent more for a piece of plate today than I was last June, I gotta deal with that. Where I used to get thirty percent markup, I can't get it today if I'm gonna stay compatible. So there's other issues out here in the public that deal with that. And I just say that to just make that very point, but I stand on my second.
The motion.
Across the board, two dollar raise. Budget two million dollars for raises, put three. Budget two million dollars for raises, put three hundred thousand aside for problem areas and the board is your raising the insurance this year.
That's correct.
You got to move on another side.
So I just want a clarification. Total budget impact for the general fund would be two million, is that what your request?
I, I think, I think when we originally in the workshop discussed, uh, the county assuming insurance, we asu- we assumed that based on the fact we had fourteen million dollars sitting aside in ARPA. So I would pull the insurance assumption, um, out to be covered with ARPA. So I would not, I would not count the insurance in the floor budget. Just, that's where we kind of went with that when those discussions came up was, you know, we certainly have money to cover insurance because we've got this fourteen million dollar pile over here. So I would, I would cover insurance this year out of ARPA. Um.
She gotta do that.
And one in the, the motion, uh, unless you want it in the motion.
We need to amend.
And two.
We're fixing to go to insurance.
All right. Full disclosure.
So you wanna pull the insurance out of this motion? And we'll do the insurance.
No, I'm not, I just want clarification, so that I understand what you're wanting to do. The current floor budget includes the assumption that you are absorbing the additional insurance.
So it's in the budget?
It's in the budget. So if you don't absorb the additional insurance, we would have to take it out.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can. I'm okay with leaving it in the budget, if it's in the budget already.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But it's two million dollars is the amount that you're looking for budgetarily.
Why, why, why can't we, 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 we budget the whole amount that we are talking about, the, under their recommendation, they do the same identical thing. The two hundred and, and, uh, uh, the, the, the two point three million dollars. and, and uh, uh, the, the, the two-point-three million dollars?
Well, Commissioner, we can always come back and amend that.
No, you can amend it because the money is gone then.
We do have money then.
I think, where you got money left from? Dick?
Can you use the microphone because that's never going to pick up? I'm sorry.
Stu, I'll run this meeting, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll run this meeting, thank you.
Okay, so the increase in insurance is already in the floor budget. And I think what I'm hearing is that uh, the two-point-three million is a reasonable amount to increase personal services, but the board is, is suggesting that it be allocated, you're still going to allocate it into the budget, but it be allocated in a different way than all across the board.
Yeah. The, the most, the motion was to allocate two million. I think Commissioner Wiggman's point is, yeah, two-point-three-sixty, whatever that, oh, fifty-two, I, I don't know, I need glasses up here. I, I, I think Commissioner's point, his point is, is, is that number's, why don't we go with that number?
Yeah.
Instead of two million, do it, same motion, but do it with twenty-three-sixty.
Well, and Madam Clerk, wasn't the three hundred thousand for addressing the problem areas? So the motion does include the two million for the two-dollar-an-hour raise and then holding the three hundred thousand for staff to address problem areas.
No, that's not. The motion was two hundred total because the two-dollar across-the-board rate is one-point-seven, so I think Commissioner Wiggman's saying if we're going to allocate, let's allocate the staff suggested amount. That would actually leave, you know, six hundred thousand dollars to, to address problem areas. I'm, I'm okay with that too.
And just to be clear, so the board understands, when you allocate the two-point-three million, that's salaries and the increase in benefits. So it's not just going into salary, it's also going.
So I'll, so I'll amend my motion to two-point-three-six is what we budget. And I, I'm okay with that also.
Two, six or three?
Two-point-three-six-zero.
Okay, okay.
Fifty-two is why he has him here for salary judgment.
Okay, so let me, let me understand this. Now we're doing what staff wants or we're going to?
We're doing, we're putting the money there.
Let me, let me, let me, let me reclarify what we're doing. Okay, we're voting to budget two-point, two million, three-hundred-sixty-thousand, fifty-two dollars for salary improvements, raises. And we're doing two dollars an hour across the board per employee. And the balance of the money left in the pot, David and Kevin or David, whoever, will address our problem areas with salaries. Instead of a ten percent across the board, let's address our problems and get that taken care of first. And then, then we can, once we get back where we need to be with everybody, then we can start doing across-the-board raises again at that point. But we have, the money will be there to fix the problems with recreation, the problems with the fire department, and different ones like that. I'm just saying a ten percent across the board, to me, don't, that don't work. That don't solve the problem. So that's my motion.
And and my, my, my point is, I, I, I can support that. I, I will concern, I, I want the total amount of money put in salaries and associated with salaries and that money is there. Now, how staff divvied it up uh, on, on the work he heard, then that's fine. But I'm, I'm pleased that the amount of money that they requested to deal with their first year is whole. So I, so I can support that, doing that.
Stu, go ahead, what do you, what, what would you want to say?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just appreciate, uh, if you can make sure that people use the microphone. Seems to be a problem wherever you go in Columbia County and the other meetings that you guys attend, you can't hear it on the videos when you go to listen. So if you would take care of that, I understand you do run the meetings. I'm a little confused on this. So, the only thing that you're really required to do now, this year, if I understand this right, is get everybody on the way to getting a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. My question with this, with this plan, does this get everybody up to fifteen right away?
No.
So, if I got this right, guys, people in the county that are making sixty thousand dollars a year, which is clearly a livable wage, I mean, I mean, Susan could live on that, I guess sixty thousand would be a cute little raise for her, I guess, maybe not, probably should maybe make it more. Uh, so those people are going to get this raise, but people that aren't even making a living wage because you can't support a family, you really can't support anything on under fifteen dollars an hour, you're going to give raises to the people that are making sixty? You're going to give raises to the people, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, got Kevin at the end, is what, a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and sixteen, somewhere around there, whichever, whichever you're on now. Those people are going to get raises, but you're still going to have people under fifteen dollars an hour? And you think that's fair?
I did.
Well, thank you very much if you answered all my questions. I have one more question. So out of the two-point-three-six million, I just heard Mr. Kraus say that also includes the benefits. So, that's not really two dollars an hour because the benefits aren't factored into that. So is it really less than two dollars an hour?
No, it's two dollars an hour plus the benefits, Stu.
And that's?
That will cover the benefits also.
The two-point-three-six includes, I see Mr. Powell shaking his head, yes, that will include the benefits and that. So, how many people will be left under this plan, still not up to fifteen dollars an hour?
I can't answer that.
Does, can anybody answer that?
I can't give you the exact number, but when we get to the end of the meeting, I can assure you we'll have it pretty quick because.
Can, can, can somebody compute?
Hold on, man, I'm talking.
Okay.
I want, we'll have a spreadsheet that'll show every employee as we've had in the past. Uh, apparently we got a new finance officer, I think it is, and uh, anyway, we'll, we'll have a new spreadsheet, I can almost assure you by the next meeting, that every commissioner here and everybody in the public can go straight from front to back, see what the base salary is, blah, 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 where you're at, and it'd be able to determine. Right now, if I remember my calculations, I think there's a hundred and.
Hundred and seventy-eight.
Hundred and ninety-two, somewhere around there, whatever.
Ninety-something, that is under fifteen. But uh, and of course, this two dollars is definitely going to take some beyond that. But it's a, it's a hard, it's a start, but uh, but I'll get to this at the end, but we are going to have a spreadsheet, as we've had in the past, real quick, where it'd be, you know, a tool that everybody here can use and the public can use.
So, so for, for clarification, so everyone's clear, we will insert the two dollars an hour across the board, calculate what those benefits would be. The balance between that and the two-point-three million will put into an account for future raises to be allocated at a future time.
I want to fix the problem areas that I keep hearing about.
So, so in your floor budget, it'll be an account where we put that money that is the difference between two dollars an hour, its full impact, and the two-point-three.
But now, when you say fixing the future, we're talking the immediate future. We're not talking, that's not halfway through the year. I mean, all we're saying is you don't have to do it by October one by doing it this way, but we, we don't want to wait halfway in the budget year to start addressing, you know, some of these glaring problems. We, because we can, we can adjust salaries and go, go back and retro to October one.
Yeah.
With, with the commissioners' input.
Retro it back October one.
With the commissioners' inputs and, and the employees' input, of course, I, I, I can't imagine this couldn't be resolved November first. It's just, I mean, you know, so we work eight, we work nine or ten hours a day.
What I'm saying is it won't be for the floor budget. It won't be in the floor budget. We'll, we'll be in the floor budget as the two dollars an hour increase and an account number with the balance of that money.
The only thing that needs to be in the floor budget is the amount of money that we'll budget. The breakdowns don't have to be there. We giving, we giving you how, how to want it done. The only thing in the floor budget is the two million, three hundred and, and, and uh, sixty-point-seventy-two.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, we will actually assign every employee a two-dollar-an-hour raise, calculate what their benefit impact is, and then the difference between that and the two-point-three, we will have allocated in a place so that you know where it's at.
You'll have that money.
We're not going to hide it somewhere, we'll be very transparent.
That money will be allocated to give raises where we need to bring people up.
Right, we will allocate it and we'll figure out where to put it and we'll make sure you know exactly where it's at, so we're very transparent with it.
So this is a tent, so what you're going to pass tonight, this afternoon, is this will go into the floor budget. This is the tentative budget, so this is still subject to change at the next meeting, actually. Probably have to, but at the next, sir?
No.
No, yes, it is.
Well, I mean, we're going to vote on floor budget.
Sir?
It could change, yes.
Yeah, it's subject, this is the tentative budget that you're approving now.
Okay.
So this is not like Lot's wife that turned to stone once she turned around. You could turn around and look at this and the board could decide that you want to get everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour this year, isn't that right?
Chair, if I may.
Is that right?
The speaker's hat is two minutes. And let me say, let me say one more thing.
Yeah.
Because you, you, I, I get tired of people twisting things. No, we're setting the floor budget.
Right.
For two dollars an hour, the remaining money is going to be the tool that we leave. The money is going to stay in the floor budget. I'm not getting in discussion with you, I'm just trying to make you clear, understand your idea. But the, the money is going to be in the budget. And so if what we and staff decide that we're going to do with recreation, fire, and all these others, it's already in the two thousand, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So are we going to change the budget? You're sitting there saying that we're going to do some type of an amended budget? No, the budget money is set there, in the discussion. Let's take a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I want to address, Stu. Okay, well, I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
All right.
I.
Stu, Stu, to your point, I, I see the point you're trying to make. It is this board's full intention to get every employee above fifteen dollars an hour and better to comply with the minimum wage law. The, the point you made about people making more money, sixty thousand dollars, that's exactly the reason why we went across the board and then we gave Dave, we gave David latitude to address this area. Yes, some employees may not need as much as others in this whole plan when it washes out. So we're addressing both problems, but you can't raise the bottom up and not, and not raise the top up a little bit too. You got to have some kind of separation in there, otherwise you won't have employees supervised.
And not only that, you've got employees that's been here twenty years and, and, you know.
But your point is exactly why we oppose a ten percent across the board for upper employees. So we could be more surgical about it. So we could give money where it makes sense.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, y'all go, y'all going to deduct?
Okay, so David now is entering that number into the column. And if you look back, you can see now how much money is left. So the next issue will be um, the sheriff's, um, the constitutional officers. Um, I'm going to start with one that's not on that piece of paper, the tax collector. I want to explain why the tax collector's not on that piece of paper. He gets paid based on a percentage of what he collects. So you have to pay him no matter what, based on the money he collects. That includes both the general fund in terms of property tax, it also includes your non-ad velour assessments. He administers and collects for your non-ad velour assessments. So those we've already built in. He has made a request of the board to consider making him whole, uh, last year, uh, because of COVID and because of the waiving of the wa, um, waiving of the fees for garbage collection, his budget is under. So he's requesting the board to consider, when we consider ARPA funds, to use ARPA funds to fund a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in his budget.
And, and how, how much he was short to make, what it takes to make him whole?
Right, and he's here, he can answer this.
No, no, I.
So that would make him whole.
What would make him whole?
Yes. In his calculations, that hundred and thirty-five would make him whole. But he's requesting it of ARPA funds, that's why it's not on this page.
So basically, the tax collector, his revenue of loss because of COVID was a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Nope. Not only, not only for COVID, but when we uh, waived the.
Garbage, garbage fee costs a bunch of money.
Mr. Chairman, I, I moved that uh, it wasn't on the tax collector, uh, a fault that he lost that money, the board contributed to it by waiving the garbage fees for, for uh, for, for this year that we are in and that we uh, allocate the money to make him whole.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, you even want to comment on that? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Ah.
Now, David, that would not come out of this budget money though, right? That would be ARPA money.
Right. That's what the motion was, that it comes out of the ARPA money.
Yep.
All right, um, property tax or a property appraiser, uh, can you pull up that other document from the last time we met? Scroll down. Keep going. Keep scrolling. One more. One more. All right, so this is what he submitted to the Department of Revenue, which is what the Department of Revenue is going to accept. So you have very little flexibility with this unless you want to go contest it with the Department of Revenue in Tallahassee. So he's actually requesting a relatively minor decrease from his actual expenditures. Of that number, you don't pay a hundred percent of it. You only pay, I think it's ninety-seven point something percent because uh, there are other taxing districts involved. So we put that in the floor budget, so that's already in the floor budget, that's why it's not on the sheet in front of you. Can you flip back to the other? So that then brings us to the sheriff's department and we've got his whole uh, presentation that you received earlier, if you have any questions and want to pull them up. Uh, he has three divisions. You can see each division how much he's requesting for a total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen additional dollars above his floor budget. Um, having said that, it's only a five-point-one percent increase or something like that. Um, and so the question is, how does the board wish to proceed with the sheriff's
I move that we approve eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars and one, or one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars for the sheriff's budget. I, I'm, it'd be hard for me to limit law enforcement right now anyway.
I'll second. Any other comment?
What, what percentage is that of the new revenue?
Um, I don't have it as a percentage of the new revenue. Mr. Powell's got a calculator, he could calculate it pretty quickly.
Whip it up. Walsh, your question, Ron?
I want, I, I, I would do, I want, I would, I would want to do a comparison. And I, what percentage of that, of that, of the new revenue, the, the county took in, told new revenue, what is that percentage?
And so for clarification, the twenty percent.
So if we would have been under the other method, the way we were doing it, that percentage would have been, he would have got more money.
Right.
Right there?
Yeah.
So for clarity, you're basically making a motion that says, give the sheriff's office what they requested.
Yeah. Any other comment? We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, he was, he was flat last year. Five-point-one, it's two-point-five over, you know.
Two-point-five a year if you do it like that.
If you do it like that, so I think it's a reasonable ask.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right. So the next office is the supervisor.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, we got it now.
All right, so the next office is the supervisor of elections office. Um, the floor budget has what she has in her current budget. This is her request over that current budget, and again, it is an election year next year. Um, how does the board feel?
You got her worksheet on there?
I'll flip over. Scroll down. Sheriff has a lot of pages because he does a very thorough job. Uh, keep going, uh, before the clerks, go back.
Just trying to confuse you. They just want to confuse you with all that paperwork.
I dropped, well, yeah, go to that sheet because it's more concise than the other So this is what she submitted for your consideration.
Okay, so that, that's, that was my only question. I just want to make sure that, I thought I remembered that in there, I don't have it here with me, but uh, sitting with the supervisor of elections in prior years, uh, they get a lot of what I call unfunded mandates coming out of the attorney general's office relevant to the security issue and I, 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 I did. And I, I, I didn't remember that that ten percent was in there, but I think Tommy's got it, uh, covered with that aspect of it, you know? Cause I could assure you, closer to election, you get here, they're probably gonna get another little mandate down there. And at least you won't have to come up there hopefully and ask us for more money, but that ten percent should cover that contingency aspect of it.
And we're certainly hoping the review committee of the redistricting will have their work done by December and the board approves it. And so, she'll have to deal with going ahead and redrawing all the lines and redoing all the paperwork with the precincts and all that stuff.
And, and, and she said, I asked a question, did she take a consideration? Did she have an election next year? And she said all of that was on the consideration with her budget submitted. So, she shouldn't have to come back and request anything more than what we give her.
I, I can't even remember what it is, Joe, but, but I remember when I was on the canvassing board, everything come down right there then and it was like eighteen thousand dollars comes to mind, but it's some kinda crazy something, but anyway, it's, I'm good.
And as she mentioned last time, she's taking her contingency money from the current year and using that to upgrade her GIS system from a range system to a point system so that she'll have a much more modern computer database, uh, going into next year.
Now, when you just said the GI, will she be able to, uh, utilize our GSI department?
Yes.
GIS department to be able to do that?
So, the answer is yes, she's always welcome to utilize our GIS department. In addition, the redistricting committee has decided that they want to hire somebody to help them with the, with the redrawing of the maps. So, we'll also have that outside expertise, um, in redoing the maps.
Okay.
The, uh, uh, these contingencies, the setup, uh, that, uh, they are for anything except for personal services, right?
Right, ultimately, she.
No, no, there are no personal service connected with contingency.
Right, contingency is just money set aside in case something happens.
Yeah.
So, in this case, it was the redoing of her, uh, database. But it usually does, it does not go to personal services unless there's something strange.
Okay. Okay, board. Move. Got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I mean, he's asking for a minimum amount, guys, I'll make a motion, we approve clerk's. Fifteen thousand, two forty-four.
Second.
What, what was the motion?
That we approved the clerk of courts for fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollar increase. Got a motion and a second. Any comment?
He did put on a suit and show up for that fifteen thousand dollars. He's not spending that on his suits and ties, is all I wanna know.
I didn't, I didn't notice, I didn't recognize him in his long ranger suit back there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, the next item, uh, Dr. Essing came to you and requested five thousand dollars for fireworks in November for the Founder's Day.
This is a one-time spent, I think it's worthy of the calls for two-hundred-year anniversary.
Yeah, I think.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
If the board wants, we could take it out of current year monies.
Yeah, that's where that need to come from.
Take it out of where?
Current year monies, current fiscal year.
Let's do that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, could you remind Mr. Essing or Dr. Essing to put in the request for the fireworks authorization?
Yes.
Soon, so the board can approve it.
When is that, September?
I think he said November, so.
November.
But again, we don't wanna do it the last minute.
So, we will take that five thousand dollars out of the board's professional services account, which has enough money to pay for it, um, so that you know where it's coming from. And we'll do that out of the current fiscal year.
David, what did we do with, how much did we give United Way last year?
Uh, we did not give United Way anything related to this, so we did not have them as a line item. We had talked about it, but, um, something came up about the advertising and all that stuff and it just never came to fruition.
Okay, do you have the spreadsheet on what the requests demands are? I mean, I know what it is, but what, what do they use it for?
She had came here at our last meeting. Uh, she did not provide us documentation. This was Jennifer Ankers, the head of the United Way. And what she was requesting was twenty thousand dollars, uh, to address a public relations campaign to address the homelessness problem.
Okay, and that's, Toby, you're on this homeless commission, is this a legitimate request, you think?
I remember Toby saying something about that.
And the board did consider it in previous years, but the campaign never got off the ground, COVID hit and it just dissipated.
So, do you wanna make a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to give United Way twenty thousand dollars for their homeless campaign.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I've got one question for, for, for vote.
Okay.
Is this gonna be reoccurring?
This is not reoccurring.
This is not reoccurring.
Is this a possible ARPA expenditure?
No.
Is there anything, uh, any other, uh, way we can pay for it except out during the point?
You could take it out of your non-reoccurring monies, but that was money we were hoping you would set aside for capital projects. But yes, I mean, if you tell us to find forty thousand.
Well, I mean, I think we're good with it in the budget, we can answer it right now.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, let's just leave it where it's at for right now, we're, we're into a problem.
So, the next item is the Itchy Tuttany Partnership.
Well, we didn't vote because I stopped the vote.
Yeah. Just, oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
I apologize for that.
Yeah.
So, the next item is the Itchy Tuttany Partnership. As you remember, they submitted a budget, it was in your packet, we can pull it up if you wanna see it. We used to pay them forty thousand dollars a year, every year, up until last year where we did not pay them. And so, they were not in last year or the current year's budget. So, this year, we did not pay them any money. They were undergoing some reorganization and changes, and so they wanna basically try and get their money restored. Of course, that does go to the Bellamy Beaver Project, uh, which gets funded to your extension.
So, in last year's budget, David, was that money budgeted but not used?
No.
Okay.
It was not budgeted.
We didn't budget it.
So, basically, what they're, what they're trying to do is recoup their twenty for last year and get twenty for this year?
No, it was always forty.
It's always been forty?
Always been forty.
Uh, uh, that's a good partnership, uh, that, 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 that we have with East Tuttany Partnership with that group. And I move that we, uh, will this be reoccurring?
This is, well, they hope it will be, yes. Yes, they hope it will be reoccurring.
Okay, that we, uh, we, uh, grant the forty thousand dollars to East Tuttany Partnership.
Well, Mr. Williams, if, if I may, I, 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 I understand what you're saying about reoccurring, but I would ask that it would have to be an annual request rather than just an overlay, you know what I'm saying? And, and not support Ron. I, I don't know if that's what Ron's saying, but that's, that's my input. So, I have no problem with the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, but I, I would want them to come back and request it each and every time.
So, Ron, are you okay?
Things change.
Would you make your motion, they have to request it every year?
Yes, sir, I'll be fine.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, the next one is the Lake, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The dog.
So, the next question is on the Lake City Humane Society Animal Control Contract. Um, they have requested to increase the animal control contract by seventy-four thousand four eighty. At your last meeting, they came and gave you a presentation, talked about how they would like to add another animal control officer in the upcoming year. And so, that is their request. I, are they here? I don't see them, but, um, that was their request.
And that would take them how far, what would be the total?
That would bring their total up to, I believe it was four hundred and forty. You wanna flip over to the other page? Um. Wait, no, hang on. Okay, on this one, hit the second tab on the bottom. So, that would bring their total to four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Four forty-eighty. Boy, that's a lot of money for animal control.
Okay.
That would bring their total number of animal control officers to three.
Uh.
They currently have two animal control officers, that would bring it to three animal control officers.
Okay, David. Me and you've had numerous conversations related to this, I had two calls yesterday, that's, that's story for another day. But my point is, at today, on the twelfth of August, can we pull up something, see something, audit? Can we see that the county tax dollars is going towards animal control separate from Humane Society? Can we determine that confidently today?
They have produced documentation on that, they are going through an audit. Mr. Powell, are you there auditor? So, that might be a better question to ask Mr. Powell.
But currently, we cannot, is that, that's simply the answer?
Okay, the, uh, the records got, uh, uh, substantially. So, uh, the, we have just completed the twenty-eighteen, uh, the work from twenty nineteen.
Mr. Powell, could you go to the microphone, that's people in the audience can't hear what you're saying.
Okay, uh, over the years, the, uh, the financial records of Lake City Humane were in arrears and I think it was personnel issues. And so, we recently completed the audit for twenty eighteen and we are working on the audit for twenty nineteen. We have those records and the twenty-twenty audit would still be outstanding. It operates on a calendar year. That that's, and, and it's, and the delays were basically inadequate documentation to complete an audit. Trying to get the documentation.
Can you give us some information of how they got this far behind on their audit?
Uh, I think it was, it, it was, uh, it was staff not, not, uh, completing records and, uh, the producing them for, uh, various staffing issues, I think.
And, and what Mr. Powell's saying is, is definitely, uh, accurate and, and, and I've been on the board for four years, so I'll take part responsibility for that. And, and that's, that leads on to my whole point. Each and every year, we give money to all types of different operations and, uh, me and David's had numerous conversations about that. And, uh, this year, starting now, Tim Murphy's stand is, I'm not giving no money out to anybody in this. They got a, a, a updated, it's just like Ameri, you know, we, we can request from United Way now, you know, detailed specification on how the taxpayers' dollars is being spent because I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna run from, I'm, I'm four years responsible on this animal shelter thing, but I know every single county commissioner up here has been getting the same emails I've been getting. I've been reading the same reports and, and I'm not throwing darts at anybody, but all I'm saying, I'm not gonna send the taxpayers' hard-earned dollars to somewhere that we, we, we don't even have bona fide set books. And it, it's collective, us included, responsibility, but just because we done it wrong in the past, you learn by your mistakes and do better. And we're fixing to do better.
I have multiple concerns with animal control. I, I share the financial concerns. I also, the, the relationship between the Humane Society and animal control and, and, and where that line is drawn, I have concerns, some of their citations are actually illegal, some of their citations actually violate people's rights. I've, uh, had personal friends and acquaintances with experiences of animal control that I think are downright illegal. I think they go in some cases beyond the bounds of what state statute and county ordinance, uh, requires them to do. We all want to protect animals, but, uh, the average citizen, uh, should not be treated like a criminal having to prove that, that, that they're good, that they're, that, that, that they're not doing anything wrong. It should be the other way around, the burden of proof should, you know? And they're not law enforcement, I think a lot of times they cross the line into law enforcement. I think the sheriff's office, you know, the, some of the comments made in the past is, well, you know, they're frustrated with the sheriff's office. I think a lot of time, law enforcement gets on scene and, and realize that they're trying to do something that's not legal, that's, that, that's not beyond, that's beyond their scope. And the sheriff's office goes, there's no problem here. Then she gets mad at the sheriff's office because they won't, they won't do what they want them to do. So, I have great concerns with their operation, their operational, uh, uh, business too. I have financial concerns and, and what, and what, how they're enforcing. Are we driving the Humane Society agenda here in Columbia County? You know, and then when you talk about, oh, we wanna register all pets and all this other stuff? Come on, I mean, we're, this is Columbia County, Florida, this is not liberal Elotso County, this is not liberal Gainesville. So, um, I don't wanna go there. And if they're gonna operate in Columbia County, they need to operate according to how you, we set it up for them, and I think they're going beyond that.
And, and I, for one, am not willing to enter into a five-year contract with them at all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I, I'm just opposite, I don't think they do enough. And I say do enough, I, I get tired of the same complaint being called in, people calling me about the same complaint over and over and over and there's nothing being done about it. If I'm, if I, I'm running an organization, I, why should I tell you, yeah, you got to catch the dog or you got to catch the cat? That's your responsibility to do that and not the individual. If they're having a problem with an animal, then if they're out of control, they're the one that should be initiating how I more solve the problem. And sometimes they get carried away on things that they shouldn't be carried away on and what's important in a sense that there, there's no resolution for. So, I, 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 I just think that we, we, staff need to have a hard-to-hard talk with animal control. And I, I, I get these letters about the management. Now, you know, I don't, I, I can't verify whether these letters, these statements are true or not, but, uh, uh, it's something going on there that, that, uh, had to be, uh, had to be addressed. And, and it's, 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 it's unfortunate that we gotta combine Humane Society and Animal Shelter. You might be good on the right hand and bad on the left hand, since speaking, so, uh, I, 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 I'm not supporting any requests first until we get all the audits cleaned up and secondly, till we have a good sit-down and, and we all get on the same page on, 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 uh, I, I don't think this board wanna run animal shelter, animal shelter, but we want it ran where we got some transparency with it, is all I'm saying.
So, so I, I think though that we are required to have some form of animal control, is that correct, David?
Uh, yeah, state statute does have us responsible for animal control. Uh, they are a contractor, an independent contractor. So, certainly, we do have other options. We've not looked into that.
I, I think at this time, what I'm hearing the board say that we need to explore our options and then make a decision based on that. Is that what I'm hearing?
I wanna say something.
Go ahead.
And what animal control and what the people with animal control gotta realize, we wouldn't take this from anybody. We're not gonna have, we're not gonna give money to somebody that doesn't even have updated of how it's being spent because we're all here for the taxpayer. And if, if, if the clerk, God forbid, came in and said, well, I don't have my audit for the last three years, y'all just give me this. We wouldn't do that for him. So, so they can't expect us to give them money when we don't know how it's being spent and we're accountable to the taxpayer and no one else. So, I, I, I concur with a lot of the things y'all said. Uh, I think it's a tough job for animal control, but, but I can't, I can't, I can't up a budget or, or really do anything with a budget when I don't know how it's being spent when it's not my money, it's the taxpayer's money, so I concur with you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Uh, David, in the current contract, is there, do you recall if there's a minimal amount of officers that's supposed to be animal control officers? That's one of the biggest issues I have, we don't have enough staff, which we, we all talking about that. But I remember, Ron can relate to some people and I can remember the Mark days, Mark would be out there catching dogs herself.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh.
Best one we ever had.
It was, uh, majors, correct, Ron? It was a collective operation, you know? So, my point is, uh, it, do you recall, is there, in our agreement, or with them, is there such a number as that?
I don't recall the exact wording of the agreement, I know the budget was based on two officers. I don't remember if, and Joel may remember better than I do. If it called for a specific number of officers, I just don't remember.
It, it, I think at this time, we just really need to look at it and it, this needs to be immediate reaction. I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna cut their fund, we're gonna cut them off today, but Mr. Powell, put you on the spot just for thirty seconds here. How much longer do you think it will take to get their books up to date? And of course, I know that's all about the composition of them, but. Okay. Realistically, can we have it by June? Do you think you'd be able to accomplish this by next June? Okay, the reason only reason I say that, Chair, before you get started there is that I have no problem continuing the money that were but paying out today. But assuredly, we can have this whole thing resolved whether or not whoever's going to be in the dog business or not by June of next year. I think that's realistic because I understand what Mr. Powell's going through. When things are so backed up, it it's kind of hard to put one on one together and make it all happen. So I just go ahead, Ron.
I was just going to say just for the audience, what Mr. Powell said, he has the information for 2019. He thinks he can wrap that up pretty soon, but he does not have any information yet for 2020 or 2021.
Right, but obviously 2021 is not.
Yeah, yeah.
It's spaced on calendar year, so you
But anyway, oh, so saying that, what I would add, I I kind of agree with Commissioner Murphy. They have some house cleaning issues that they need to to take care of. And I think for us to 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 release this kind of money to any organization that's not up to date on audits and no record of where this money is being spent. If Miss Commissioner Murphy would like to make that into a motion.
I'll make the motion that we continue to fund the monthly payment that we are now with a reorganization plan brought back by the animal shelter and county staff by June of 22.
Could we also add in that that they look at other explore other options and bring us back?
And 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 staff will be responsible for bringing other options if possible back to us. First meeting of June 22.
Okay, I have a motion. I got a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Okay, so that would be zero. And the last one is Meridian Mental Health, Behavioral Health. Uh, they did a presentation for you a couple of weeks back, gave you a nice, pretty PowerPoint picture. At the end of the day, they asked you for additional $5,157.
Move to approve Meridian. If you've never been involved with Meridian, you don't know the job that they do.
Heck of a job.
Yeah.
Second. And I and I don't believe they came, they asked for any 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 extra money last year, did they?
It's a well-greased machine.
Yeah, so, oh, okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? So where are we at on our money?
We got one more.
That's it?
That's it.
No, we don't. We got on Eagle's Wings that the board wanted information on.
Okay, they are in the floor budget because they didn't ask for any increase, but I did put in your packet the information on Eagle's Wing because you had questions.
How the money is used, you got you have that.
Yeah, and I don't know. Is anybody from on Eagle's Wings here?
I did see it in the backup material, but I don't see it on the agenda.
Right, it was in the supplemental period. In the supplemental materials. They had given it to us, I think, this week, Monday or Tuesday, and we wanted to make sure the board saw it.
What is the amount they're asking for?
It's already in the budget.
Thirty.
It was like 34,000.
But that's in the budget already?
It's in the budget, but if you choose not to fund it, we can take it out.
We don't need to take any action. We're good.
Okay. In the backup material, I appreciate it coming out because I asked for it when the gentleman was up here the other day. And he went into detail with it to the point. A couple of points I want to make here. Or just bring some thought to the table. Columbia County, if I understood what I read, we're the only person supporting this operation, correct? We 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 support Eagles on the wings 100%. Okay. If I read it right, they're talking about if everything goes good with COVID, they're going to be supporting seven clients this coming year. Seven new clients will be coming on. Okay, my simple question is, why isn't the city of Lake City participating in this? The Department of Corrections, when I did my research, called Tallahassee, talked to a gentleman over there because I had to get the whole rundown on it. Why would you cut off a service such as this? And their point was simply this. We putting, I want to say, don't quote me on this, $8.9 million annual in our budget, our floor budget for the reentry programs that we do now. So they're doing the same thing right out here in the lusty that they are doing. And but Department of Corrections in their floor budget two years ago, I'm pretty sure it was might have been three, but two on the Florida on the Florida legislature, they cut that from the budget because they took that allocated funds and put it over here on this. And so and 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 the people are right, you know, you got this amount of people coming into Columbia County, but I guess my point as a taxpayer as a whole in the state of Florida, we're paying it over there too. And so when they get here, I understand there's stumbling blocks and I've never been in prison, been close, but the I I know that it's tough to get started out there. I get all that. And but and I have not a problem with this, but this is not just a Columbia County issue. I mean, I think it's time Lake City needs to buck up. And, you know, because I mean, it's a lot of money to spend on seven people. And and again, I know it's a one-man show over there and I praise this lady for doing this, but before I fund it next year, uh, I want to
Break down how the money is.
I want a Dick Powell kind of person. I I don't want numbers created by in-house. I want a seal saying these are documented numbers. Yeah, as well, and I'll go one step farther. All the our our 501(c)(3) organizations, they need to do the same thing. They it you know, because we we just got to get open, we just got to get to the point, this is taxpayer dollars. And it's a, but I I would request I don't know if any of y'all have been to Eagles on the Wings. I I I stopped down there last year. Uh, just so happened, to be honest with you, I I recognized somebody that was getting service there. They used to live here in Lake City, got out of the pen. Ain't seen them a long time. And but anyway, long story short, I get it. I ain't going to say I agree with it 100%, but uh, I think that uh, I don't know what we can do. I know it's in the floor budget. And I know that's kind of going, you going next door to City of Lake City, hey, it's in our floor budget, but we need help. But if uh, I don't have a problem doing it one more year, but if the city is not willing to buck up and be a partner in this, uh, I'm going to kill it next year.
And I would add, Commissioner Murphy, you're exactly right. I think all these people should be held accountable for the money and how they have spent. And I think they should have to turn in some kind of report done by a professional. I'm sure all these companies have CPAs. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, and if we do it for one, we're going to do it for all.
Absolutely. You're right. Yep.
Yep, 100%.
So what will happen? Because I know this is an issue that's been an issue that's been repetitive. When the financial officer starts work in a few weeks, that is their first responsibility is to go through renewing all the contracts. But before we actually sign the renewal contract, before we issue another dollar to any of the outside agencies and or sports leagues, they would have to provide adequate financial documentation.
Yes, sir.
And all that will have to be brought back to the board with the renewal of their contracts. So you'll get a chance to see this when we come back and say, here's their contract. Do you want to renew it? And find out if they've actually turned in their financials or not.
Well, David, in defense of the entities that we fund, I would ask you to reach out to them immediately and tell them, you know, give them some heads up because these are all volunteers. Say, hey, this is what's coming down the you know, because I can pretty well attest to you, I know a lot, I know the internals of a lot of these volunteer organizations. And a lot of them are sitting on Monday today. That has got the capability going out and hiring, you know, whoever and whoever to do, you know, to get us a, you know, so when I look at that, I can see that's certified CPA, but you know, whatever. Somebody's got validity rather than, you know, a biased opinion. This is what we're doing with our money. And so I I guess wasn't trying to tell you, let's not wait till this new financial person comes.
She's on.
Call.
Oh.
He just said two weeks.
We don't need a motion on this. It's already in the budget, right?
Unless you want to take it out, it's in the budget.
No, that's good.
Okay, oh, we need to address one other thing. Oh, Joe. Oh, I was looking at your email here. Oh, can you address this on the retroactive pay?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
No, I just heard it mentioned. And so I sent an email real quick to the board so y'all would know. Florida statutes precludes retroactive pay for public officials and for public employees. So basically, once a service is rendered, you can only pay what was agreed to be paid at the time the service was rendered. So if you guys want to do pay raises that are going to be effective on October 1st, make sure you have them negotiated and approved before October 1st. Just keeps you out of the woods. It's 215, whatever that statute was I quoted to you guys. But just the state law.
So basically, we can't go back retroactive to fast. Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
David.
Yes.
Did we or did we not have an agreement with collective bargaining, that what the board done for everybody else, they accept that also?
Well, obviously, whatever raises you give, we have to take back to the collective bargaining group and renegotiate, yes.
Ben, did we or did we not? I I can hear you, Ben.
He said yes.
Commissioner, I don't have that contract in front of me, but I believe it was for a three-year period they agreed to accept whatever the board gave as raises.
Are we in that three-year period now or you don't remember?
I I believe we are, but I but I'd have to look at it to see. But that was the last contract. It was either a three or five year that they said they agreed to accept the wages that the board approved for the other employees.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the remainder uh, 648,372 dollars be put in contingency.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Hold on, I want I want to talk about that too.
Okay.
Second one discussion.
I have another thing we should do that is why can't we figure out a way to give that back to the taxpayer?
Well, we we're looking at doing a rollback for that, so.
Okay, well, I just be a way to do it.
Well.
That's just my suggestion.
Okay, according to Mr. Powell, that's really not the way to do it is write checks back to the taxpayer. What we really would need to do is a rollback rate for next year.
No.
We
No.
Ms. Powell.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ron.
I I I I think there is a way to do it without having a rollback rate. You talk about less than 60 cent, $60 per property owner. Uh, I I think uh, uh, Dick has a way that we might can uh, uh, waive the garbage fee again and still make put that Dick, you want to explain this?
Mr. Powell, would you?
It's yeah.
Ain't no money to give back.
The issue with rolling back the millage is that in Columbia County history, once it's ever reduced, it's never increased again. And so that 801 million would be lost out of every budget into the future. Uh, so and there's a very and and there I you know, it's hard to look in the future, but the likelihood of having four and a half million dollars in excess revenue in the future is not likely because that was basically a one-year issue that you would have that much.
Yep.
And so uh, it it would be, in my opinion, harmful financially to to take that much revenue out of the recurring budgets of the future. Uh, however, uh, and and I'm I'm not aware and I'm I've been around a while, but I'm not aware of ever a a unit of government actually writing checks to property owners. I I haven't ever seen that. I'm not I'm not Joel may may know something about that. But uh, so I would look at at for, you know, if you're pursuing this area, I would look at for one year uh, taking a revenue source such as non-advalorm assessments for garbage or fire and using these funds to subsidize the uh, the assessments for people and actually move that money over and reduce the assessments for one year by that amount. Because it gives some relief to the taxpayers, but also it preserves this recurring revenue for next year when when you will need it more than you need it this year.
I did commit, I just think we we saved some money. We got some left over. Let's give it back to the people that gave it to us in the first place. That's my suggestion. And I know there's a motion on the floor, and if I need to make a motion, I will, but.
Well, we have to deal with that motion first.
Okay. This rollback discussion comes, seems about since I've been running for office, we've been talking about rollbacks. Why even have a rollback if it's such a bad idea? Uh, Mr. Powell points out that it it takes that off the books forever. You lose it forever. You know what I say that I say good. Great, you know, um, it's not just about a quarter millish point and 40 or 50 dollars to the taxpayer. It's about sending a message that we in Columbia County are going to keep taxes low. We're going to keep government accountable. And what we don't account for is growth. We've had steady growth over 20 years. How long has it been since we rolled back a millage? I mean, everybody else is raising millages and and we're talking about cutting taxes. That's what we're supposed to do. And that's that's what a conservative board is supposed to do. Um, that is a message to everybody wanting to move here and do business here. Our taxes are low. So what? We lose it forever. We gain it on the growth end. I mean, it's it's the right thing to do. You got 14 million dollars hanging out here in ARPA money. And 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 the federal government is spending spending our grandkids's future away. The only way to rectify that and give some relief to people is to a rollback. And 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 a rollback lasts forever. I get it. Good. I want it to last forever.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I I think if you roll the rollback a quarter mill, you're talking about 800,000 dollars. That less than $60 per person. If you do a special assessment, it's 200 dollars, over 200 dollars per person. They're getting more money on a on on assessment rebate than they are on a quarter mill rollback.
They get more money for one year, but the rollback, the 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 rollback lasts unless you put it back. Over time, that rollback is worth way more than 40 dollars a year, 50 dollars a year.
Well, I mean, the staff kind of recommended this 0.25 rollback, if I remember what I was and they 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 seem to think that we can cover it. So and and I agree with Commissioner Williams. I think we can cover it also. Oh.
At the um, the meeting we talked about, we believed we could get there. Um, obviously, it would be a little bit low on the 6.48. Uh, we would have to take some of your non-recurring money to supplement it.
But we should be able to generate more than that next year over assessments from from next year to next year.
Well, you you're going to have continued growth. And and the thing about it is, Mr. Williams is exactly right. It's going to be a minimal amount as far as the payback to the constituent. But you got to look at it this way. There ain't a person sitting in here that owns any real estate that the valuation hasn't increased to some percentage each and every day for the last 20 years. As well as your real estate holdings are going to increase for the next 20 years. So the way I look at that, and I I appreciate Mr. Richards, uh, conservative, I've me and him sat on many budget meetings before uh, with other entities. But my point is simple as this, is that what is it going to do for my neighbor, my tax, my fellow taxpayers for 20 years down the road when your 250,000 dollar home is, you know, you're paying taxes on then a 320,000 dollar home? It compounds and it still gives you relief in the future. And and on an economic development standpoint, talking to warehouse and what have you, uh, you you've got to be, you've got to realize that when corporations are coming in here to decide whether or not they're coming to Columbia County, Elotso Way County or whatever, uh, they look at what they're going to be able to pay their people. A good living, sustainable wage, and then what are the overhead burdens to that family that's going to be, as long as they can keep that family happy?
A, as long as they can keep that family happy, they're going to be more productive and they're going to be a better constituent for the county that they're relocating into or locating to. So it, it's a, it's not an immediate punch, but it is starting somewhere. And, and I have to agree with Toby a hundred percent, uh, uh, and, 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 and I'm, I'm going to defend Kevin here. Me and Kevin have been talking about this. And he, he said, you know, sometimes we get so caught up in the fog, we don't pay attention to our, our, our biggest vital asset. And we need eighty million dollars today to fix the infrastructure that we got already laying here. But, but somewhere along the line, there's got to be a collective issue. And I, I, I agree with Toby. Uh, that's what we as elected officials supposed to do is, uh, I, I want a smaller government, you know, with bigger results. And I think this is, I think this is a starting point. I think we'll set a precedence, uh, for North Central Florida, too. Well, I think if you look at larger counties that experience growth, that millage rate is much smaller than ours. So I, I think that's how you deal with it. A, as, as the county grows through industry and growth, the burden on the taxpayer should decrease. That's the way you should govern. So I'm, I'm one hundred percent, let's roll it back. If, if ever was a time to take a rollback, it's this year.
So if you roll back the full quarter mill, just so you know, the difference between that and the six ninety-three, we'll have to go back and start cutting.
Yeah, what's the difference? What's the difference?
A mill is exactly how much. It's eight hundred and.
Quarter mill.
Quarter mill is about eight hundred.
Eight, about eight hundred.
Just slightly over eight hundred. She's talking probably about two hundred thousand dollars that we will cut from the floor.
Hold on, he's going to tell you exactly what.
On a sixty million dollar budget, I can help you find that real quick.
Well, you know, we, 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 Toby, you're talking, always talking about all this hockey money, all that money going away next year.
Commissioner Williams. You know, you know. I thought you've been fighting for this rollback for two years now.
You not going to have that money next year.
I know, but you, you wanted to roll back last year a full mill.
Yeah, yeah, I want, I, I know, quarter mill last year, and nobody wanted to go along with it.
Well, that's what we're trying to do now.
But what if changed from last year to this year? We got, what if changed between why this board voted four to one, not to roll back last year? When I wanted rollback last year, and we agreed to roll it back.
I can answer that question.
La, la, last year, when we were doing, we were, uh, having to craft a budget, we didn't know what COVID would do to us, and we didn't know what federal funding, federal funding, if any, would come down to us. We were before that.
That's exactly right.
And, and so we, we, we were very conservative across the board last year.
That's bull.
That's not bull. That's exactly why.
That's bull. That's bull. Uh, we, you're up for election this year, next year. I mean, hey.
I just want to give some money back to the.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor to put this money that's left over in contingency. Let's have a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed? Okay. All right. Any other business on the table today? You want to deal with the rollback today? Well, you, I mean, we, we started discussion. Are, are we, are we moving on that today or what?
We just put that in the contingency.
Right.
Yeah. And now we're talking about the rollback.
Well, that's, that's all we want to talk about. Now, that wasn't on the agenda.
But it would be brought back in the floor budget.
We, we're working on the floor budget, so.
Yeah.
So we can have, how, any business we can in the, uh, working on the budget.
It's not on the agenda.
So we already voted to do the rollback quarter mill, so somewhere you got to find about two hundred thousand dollars.
We hadn't voted to do the rollback.
Huh?
We have not voted to do the rollback. Now we're taking tickets.
So based on the decisions that the board has made, your floor budget is balanced with six hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars going into contingency and above what we already have.
I was just saying, give that money.
If you then decide to lower the millage, we're going to have to go back and cut. All eight hundred thousand dollars.
Basically, that money would not go in the contingency. We would have to cut another two hundred thousand somewhere, is what you're saying.
Correct.
But we can make that two hundred thousand up from, uh,
Non-recurring.
Not, for, not, for non-recurring funds, right?
Yeah, what, what we should have done, we, we kind of backed it on what we doing. If we were going to do the rollback, it should have been the first thing on the agenda of this. Of the two point some million dollars that we have to work with. That should have come off the top right there. And then we went down the list is what we had to do. And then we would have had that amount of money at the bottom left right there. We wouldn't have any money left at the bottom there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, basically, what we just, what y'all just did, you're eight hundred thousand dollars shy by putting the remaining.
Into the contingency.
Right, so right now, if you so choose to roll back, you're eight hundred plus thousand dollars shy of a balanced budget.
So if we're going.
Well, if we, if we leave that money out of contingency, which two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. Right. So we really.
But you just voted to put it in.
Right. It, it's six hundred thousand dollars. I want to give it back to the taxpayer. Y'all want to do a roll, where others want to do a rollback. We just have to, it's just short, short.
And, and to speak to that point, that, that, I just, there's no provision in Florida law that allows you to stroke checks back based on the end of the year. Those will be refunds. Uh, they'd have to be applied for based on overpayment. There is no allegation of overpayment. And then if you did pay it back, you have to pay it back with interest, which we obviously can't get into that. And you got a prorate, Dick can tell you. But there is no provision for just a refund where you just say, hey, everybody, we had a good year, here's some money back. Doesn't work that way. So I think what you have to do, Commissioner Hollisworth, is like the board's talking about, you put it in contingency for the next budget. And then if you want to have savings, you strip out that contingency by reducing the millage, and then that's how you've given that money back.
We.
It's the same six hundred and some odd thousand dollars you're giving it back that way.
Long as I get it.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell, the six hundred forty-eight thousand, three seventy-two, what percentage would that be of a rollback? So you're at eight hundred thousand for point two-five, if we put new point two.
Okay, well, obviously, and I think what I'm hearing, it's possible you could take the six, and I can't see it, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Compute that into millage. It would be a little less than a quarter of a mill, but it might be point two mills. And then the budget would still be balanced. It wouldn't be the quarter, but it would be, it, it would be close to that.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that's another good point, is you could take this as your savings and then he could back into the mill. So it might not be point, it might not be a quarter, but like you said, it might be less than a quarter.
And that was, that was the intent of, that was the intent of doing this way. So you would see at the end really how much you had.
Yeah.
To either apply to a rebate.
That would give.
On assessments.
That's all I care about.
And so kind of, so kind of your question is, do you want to do it one time or recurring?
What I'm going to do is make a motion, Mr. Chair, if I could, if we could just give direction to staff based on the discussion, because this isn't on the agenda. We don't really want to take action on millage once on.
So bring that back to the meeting for the budget meeting?
So unclear what the millage would be if we rolled it back by the remaining balance.
Right, yeah. Or six hundred and twenty-five, thirty, whatever, whatever, you know, you can leave a little bit.
We can count it like that.
Yeah. Bring that, and put that on the, uh.
We'll do that when we go to the floor budget. Yeah.
Yeah. Y'all good with that, everybody?
But far as the budgeting process, we need to leave it in contingency, or do we need?
No, we'll, we'll vote to bring that up contingency.
It's good where it is right now. Okay.
Yeah, for now, we'll put it in contingency.
David, you got that? Any other questions, anyway? Joe, I appreciate you giving us a heads up on not being a retroactive.
Us going to jail.
Well, nobody would have gotten in trouble. I just didn't want to give people false hope, you know, they get, they get a raise and then can't have it. And I know y'all wouldn't do that anyway.
He can't wait to the day that he's got to go to another bail bond, another robbery.
Okay, let's, we're going to do two-minute comments at this time. Anybody got any?
That's all we got, David.
One more item.
Oh, you think I know item? They got, David, they got another item.
What?
David say he got another item we got to do before we.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was it. Okay.
One more item. What Kevin and I would like to do is have you put the non-reoccurring year-end money, which we have to do per charter, into a single account that we then can have a work session and go over the unfunded capital projects in more detail. But you would budget for unfunded capital projects in one spot.
I got you. Okay. I got, you got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No, you can go.
Okay, now we're doing too many comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If somebody could send me that email that Mr. Foreman sent to everybody, I'm a little confused about the raises.
About what?
The raises that he said you couldn't give. My understanding is, I'm not understanding, so if somebody could forward me Mr. Foreman's email.
Okay.
That, that'd be great. I don't know what he was talking.
Let me clarify what he said.
Thank you.
He's saying that whenever you give the raise, it's from that point on, you can't go back to October 1st. Basically, if you give the raise November the 3rd, it's effective from November 3rd on.
Yeah, right.
You can't go retroactive back.
I get that.
Okay.
That makes sense. I thought all these raises started beginning of the next fiscal year, right? Anyway.
The two dollars an hour is, but hopefully all of them will.
Right, that's what I thought it was. I, I never had any question about that. Thank you very much for that explanation. I do have a question. I was here months ago when this board voted to pay Mr. Kraus the difference between what a county manager made and what he was making before. My understanding was, and this is what Mr. Foreman is talking about, but my understanding from the clerk's office is that they had some problems in finance over there. But that can be rectified by some sort of contract change. This board voted to give him the money, period. Now, everybody seems to have forgotten about that. The story is, is that the clerk, tell me if I'm wrong, the clerk's office said that's not legal. Mr. Foreman basically said that before in his email that he sent to you. But there are ways that you could do what it is that you said you would do. You got six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars there, and you said you would do it. My question is, are you going to do it? I mean, you said you would do it. You voted to, to give him the money. He worked the three months, uh, not making what a county manager would make when he had the responsibilities and obligations of a county manager. You voted to give him that, make that, up that difference. Uh, you can still do it. All you have to do is speak to the clerk, and I'm sure between Mr. Swisher and Mr. Scott, you can figure out a way to do it. My question is, are you going to do it?
We'll bring, we'll, we'll address that. I don't know, I can't even speak for the whole board, but, uh, we, we, we will address that. Thank you.
When? Next, next meeting, you put on the agenda? It's up to you guys.
I got to get some answers, Steve. We'll find out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Commissioner Williams?
Thursday at one o'clock in four a.m., next Thursday.
Yes. Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to address something that was brought up earlier. Um, that pushing for a rollback may be because I'm running for reelection. And I, I would just like to point out that every speech I gave when I was running for election the first time, I mentioned cutting taxes. I have been consistent on cutting taxes since I've set up here. I was the one last year who pushed for the garbage rollback. So I can assure you, my stance on government and how government should operate and taxes has not changed just because I'm running for reelection. I just want to make that clear.
I agree. I thought that comment was probably out of line. Oh, I do have one thing I need to bring before the board. Um, I have a road, Marigold, in my district. Due to all the rain we've had, that road is underwater. I've got probably fifteen to twenty residences that's having trouble accessing their property because of it. Oh, we have, we have had an, you know, a, a unnatural amount of rain. And, uh, I've had Mr. Kirby out to look at it. Oh, he, he says it can be fixed for a minimum amount of money. And I'm asking the board to allow him to fix this problem on this road. I do have pictures of it, but I broke my phone last night. I think Mr. Kirby has pictures also on his phone. But, uh, what I would do is ask to make a motion that you allow Mr. Kirby to haul some millings in this spot so these people can access their property. Uh, and they have had, have made an attempt to fix it themselves. They have bought one load of millings and they can't find any more millings, can't get any right now. And, uh, i- it's a problem for several residences.
This is off private road?
This is, it's on a private road. It's Marigold off of Tustinougie. Oh. And like I said, I want to make a motion to allow Mr. Kirby to fix this problem for them.
So it's underwater as we speak?
Yes, so what Mr. Ford is speaking of, it's going to require about five, six loads of millings. Like those are in the spread of it. Basically, it was underwater. The folks did work, tried to fix it themselves. It has somewhat dried up. But obviously, if we get another rain, and we will, they're going to experience the same problem getting in and out of their houses. But it is a private road, will require about five, six loads of millings.
I've got people parking on the other side, driving four-wheelers and alert Rangers, trying to get back and forth to their houses, and it's, it, it's mess.
And of course, I know we come up with this private road, you know, assessment deal, however you want to say it, that we dealt with here a while back, but, uh.
I ain't been discussing with them about that also.
Okay. On a legal standpoint, are we going to get burnt, sued here for the people we denied before? I'm all for helping the people, but.
Yeah, this could, this could open, yeah. You know, I need to look at the facts and circumstances here and, and what are we talking about to make sure that it's, you know, something we're allowed to do. You know, during a state of emergency, if it's storm-related damage, we can, you know, the board can vote to approve it. Um, but again, the rain we've experienced here lately has been extraordinary.
It's a very weird situation that we're sitting in.
I mean, we got over twelve inches.
I've had these same calls, too, and I don't, you know.
How many people live on the rock?
Well, it's about a quarter mile down that road and there's.
Is Marigold definitely private?
Twenty residents down at the end of that road, can't get through there.
It is.
Marigold turns off of Tustinougie, about probably a mile, mile and a half past Hurle.
If the, if the board wants to approve it, you know, subject to a review that I'll make with Mr. Kirby, just to make sure we're, we've got our, I mean, and I would be okay with that. Just give me an opportunity to look at it.
I mean, I know what we went through, you know, a, a, and again, I'm, I'm with Rocky on this deal, but.
Oh, no, I, I agree.
I do know what we went up against before, and I just don't want to, uh. But Mr. Hollisworth, they said this could open up Pandora's. Fortunately, I'm one of the very few that's got very many private roads in my district, but Rocky's bombarded with them, Toby's bombarded with them, Ron's bombarded with them. So it's, uh, puts us in a unique situation. It's just. Like we said earlier, you do one for one, you got to do it for everybody. I just.
But, yeah, yes, yeah, I, I'm getting all, getting these calls, too, and I go look at them and, and what I'm having to tell people is that I can't, the county cannot work on product property unless we, uh, uh, on a declaration of emergency. And then I could help you, but there's no way I can help you now because we're not on a declaration.
Well, you know, a lot of this happened under the, under, when we was under the state of emergency. I mean.
I understand what you're saying, but we all, we, we, the county attorney got called this shot, called, we all got people can't get in and out.
And Commissioners, I'll, I'll defer to, uh, uh, Mr. Foreman there, but I just, I just want to make sure that we can declare a public purpose for, um, for that expenditure. So we're not cutting a, uh, an illegal check for expenditure.
You could very well be under a new state of emergency in a couple of days, Rocky.
Yeah. And, and, and look, just in, in the interest of, you know, complying with the opinions of the Attorney General that I've outlined for you guys before, um, you know, once that state of emergency comes into effect, then we have a process for presenting these projects, and then it really does just become a matter of y'all's discretion. The, the Attorney General has said that. But when you're outside of state of emergency, as the clerk has indicated, you have to have a specifically stated public purpose for going in and doing the work. It, again, if, if, based on the information that's in front of us right now, if the board is inclined to, you know, agree, uh, with Commissioner Ford's request, subject to a review, I mean, y'all know that if I can't say yes, I'm not going to say yes. Uh, so I'll work something up to explain why one way or the other, and we can document that. But I also agree with Commissioner Witt, based on the amount of water on the ground right now, we might be under state of emergency if Fred.
There probably should be some state of emergency after you had so many inches of rain, regardless of a storm, but they, it's not, I guess that's not in the law.
The board can declare states of emergency. I mean, that's one of the things y'all are able to do.
We are able to do that without the governor.
Yeah, you can have a local state of emergency.
Yeah, a local state of emergency exists whether or not the state declares.
But, but you have to go through the process of declaring it. There probably needs to be some circumstance that calls for it.
I don't even get to wet.
Kirby's down there laughing. He knows what I'm going on.
He's slowing us down every time.
Sheriff Hunter, get ready.
There is.
Tim Black, Tim Black, state of emergency.
But if you would, you know, again, based on what's been presented up to this point, I can give, Mr. Kirby, we can go evaluate it. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll give y'all legal opinion either way, but if y'all do it subject to the legal opinion, then.
I'll make a motion to approve it subject to the legal opinion.
No, no, no. For this particular road, because we're not under state of emergency, these are the facts and circumstances that exist right now. So they're approving subject to a legal opinion based on my, I'm gonna go review this. I've not seen it before. No, but they're doing it based on what's presented right now. And that's what my analysis is gonna be based on what's, what's presented right now, right? These are, these facts and circumstances.
Of course they.
If we go under a state of emergency, they can re-present it under state of emergency, under those circumstances. I'm giving legal opinion based on what I know right now.
Stu, I can understand what you're saying when you don't have the microphone.
Yeah, you talking about why not use a microphone?
I know, I know, I was just wanting to get invited. Thank you very much, Mr. 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 Williams. Uh, I understand what Mr. Foreman is saying, following up on what Mr. Swisher said. You can't give the money away on a, it's a piece of private property unless you declare it for a public purpose. At least. Well, no, but what Joel just said is he's based on the legal opinion. You have to declare it's a public purpose and then, and then I guess he's gotta go. Some place in the process, unless you wanna open up Pandora's box, you gotta declare that doing what Mr. Ford asks you to do is for a public purpose.
Thanks, Stu, we understand that. Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure you understand that.
That's what Mr. Foreman was saying.
We're gonna go by the law. Review it, see if it can be declared a public.
I, you know, you guys are ostensibly by approving it, suggesting there's a public purpose.
There's no.
I will evaluate this, evaluate it to see if one actually exists.
Okay, I have a motion.
It's easy to say ones there, but, you know.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, so what we're saying, um, uh, my blue road, where people, a private road, if people can't get in and out, do I just need to bring that before the board?
Yes.
But, but Commissioner Williams, as long as we're outside of a state of emergency, it'd be exactly what happened right here. I'm gonna still have to do a legal review, so it, it'd be better to get a legal opinion before you bring it. Does that make sense? I think Commissioner Ford's circumstances were just time sensitive.
Whether it can happen or not.
Cause, cause again.
Give it to him and see if it can be.
Okay. Yeah, the, the, the answers probably aren't gonna change that much, Commissioner. I mean, you know how it's been for the last few years with me, so.
Or it, it, it would be just like the road that where the color blew out and, and in my district on that private road. And, and you went out there and looked at and saw all those houses back there, rest you could. And you didn't. Law enforcement at N A L couldn't get there and you said, we need to fix this.
And you did that under state of emergency with photos and the whole nine yards? Yes, sir. And then that allowed the board to say, under that state of emergency, this was a legitimate public purpose.
Okay, great.
I apologize.
Good.
Can you please confirm her, the second one? I didn't hear the second.
Second was Commissioner.
Thank you.
We gotta get you a speaker down there.
Okay.
I got, I got one thing, Rocky.
Go ahead.
Uh, just for the board's knowledge, I approached Joe prior to this meeting. Uh, I've got a situation out there, uh, it's at two forty and forty-seven where Brookwood goes down. And that bridge, in a right, major rain event, hurricanes, a lot of times goes underwater. It's the only access in and out of that facility. Up until now, Debbie and all the other hurricanes, what they do, they go all the way to the back of the neighborhood and they exit out Limwood Brown's property, which comes out right beside Ricky Philpott, just to give you a geographic area. Limwood has fenced off a corridor, if you wanna say, down his west property line. And, uh, there's an area down there in the event that, that gets slushy. He was asking that, uh, Boggy, whatever you wanna call it, that if that event came up and what brought it to his attention, of course, is what's on the news today. And that could, could we put some millings or something in there to where the people would have access, even if they were gonna? However, it would be fixed, if it could be fixed, would totally be up to Kevin and his crew. But what I asked Joel to do, Mr. Brown's main thing is, in the event, this wouldn't be a three hundred and sixty-five day a year trail. Uh, it's only in the event that these people get blocked in over there. He doesn't want him and his family, now that that's their permanent residence, to be held liable for an accident or something like that. And Joel's just simply gonna research it to see if there's a way that during that event, we could take on the responsibility to make sure that, you know, Brown's estate wouldn't get sued or something like that. And if I boggle that up, Joel, and, and, uh, don't know if we can do it or whatever, but it's, uh, for the constituents in there, it's, it's no doubt.
What's the name of that road, Kevin? That, where the bridge goes underwater?
Yes, I know exactly where you're talking about. On the first part of what you mentioned, we had, I don't know about the liability side. As far as the operational side, we had to do that during, uh, Debbie on various pieces of property. Go over here, the attorney, during Debbie. So I guess, I guess back then, I know on the operational side, we can do what you're talking about.
We can't.
On the operational side.
Okay.
We got it before, during Debbie.